Twenty twenty five. We need a roll call, Norma?
Mayor Hendrick.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Stoker.
Present.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Vazquez.
Here.
Councilmember Connell.
Present.
Councilmember Haney.
I'll be here.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. Our pastor's not here tonight, so I'm going to ask Abe Mitchell to leave us in prayer. If you're able to, please stand.
Could we bow our heads? Father God, we come to you today asking you to watch over us, watch over our city. Bless this council and let us make the right decision for our city. Bless our fire department, our police department. And as I ask you again, to watch over us and let us go in the right way. And just help us to become a better city and better people here in this world. Amen.
Amen. Councilman McNeil, please, on the pledge.
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Please be seated. I don't believe there's any proclamations tonight. Is there any comments on citizens?
Yes, Carmen Haynes. You, you have three minutes to speak. If you could say your name for the record.
My name is Carmen Haynes, and I have been before you several times speaking about animal control changes that I would like to see. And I would also like to thank you for the positive steps that have been taken in that direction. I've noticed a concerted effort on publicizing the spay and neuter clinics and the vaccine clinics, and I appreciate that. But while we've made some steps in the right direction, there are more we need to take. Tonight, today, I would like to talk to you about the evening and weekend services from animal control. Only aggressive or injured animals will be responded to. On Saturday, there was, I was driving and I saw a dog in the street, and I called to report it. It was dead. And I was told to call back on Monday, that they would not respond until Monday. I said, well, can I leave a message so that they can check it Monday? No, if it's still there, you have to call back. Sunday, I drove by, the dog was still there. It was beginning to bloat up considerably. Monday at late morning, I drove by and it was removed. It is illegal for citizens to put a dead animal in the dumpster, which leaves us to have to wait for animal control. If you have a dead, decaying animal on your property for forty-eight to sixty hours, that is unacceptable. Had this happened at Friday evening, and it was not picked up until Monday morning, it would be sixty hours. As it was, it was approximately forty-eight. There's another situation. When I was at United Supermarket on West County and University about two years ago, there was a dog running in the parking lot close to the street. I called and was asked, is it aggressive or injured? I said, well, it's not injured yet, but it will be as soon as it gets in the street. And I was told, well, when that happens, call us back. Last year, I was on a residential street. A dog started chasing a cat headed my direction. I came to a full stop, but the dog was so fixated on the cat, it hit my car full force. It did $2,000 worth of damage to my car, and I was stopped. Imagine if that had been on a six-lane road with cars going forty to forty-five miles an hour, assuming people are obeying the speed limit. I was in a car versus animal accident. But on a six-lane road, that could very easily be an animal versus multi-car accident, which will increase the potential for human injury. I have two solutions, and they recognize the fact that officers do have lives. We would not expect them to respond to every dead animal as soon as it's reported, but I would ask that they respond within twenty-four hours. I think that is, would be reasonable. I also do not expect... Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. We do appreciate it. Erin, would you ask animal control just to look into their policies about pet animals? I'm not sure.
Sure, we, we can do that. And for the council's edification, we have a new director over that department now, and that's Nira. And so we'll, we'll get with her, and then we'll take a look at just our policies in general and just see what we could do. Maybe there's also some partnership with maybe even the street department or anything like that to assist with, with dead animals on the, on the, on the road. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you, appreciate your attention. Before we go on, I would like to wish a special mom a happy birthday. Carol Stokers, birthday today, so Carol, happy birthday. All right, let's move on to our consent agenda. I'm sure there's no other speakers. Move to our consent agenda. Has anyone had a chance to look at the minutes in council and work session? And if so, how to entertain a motion?
I so moved, Mayor, that we accept the consent agenda.
Okay, motion by Councilman Vasquez. Is there a second? Second by Councilman, is that Connell or Haney? Haney. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Let's move to our regular session, agenda item number ten. Consider the recommendation from outside council regarding issuance of RFPs twenty-five dash five-one-three-one-zero-dash-two-oh regarding leased city minerals, not surface tracks of land, oil and gas. Steve?
Mayor, City Council, thank you for having me. We have three RFPs ending in twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. One is for some thirty-three acres that are underneath the draw in Comanche Trail Park North. We have another five to ten acres that appear to be beneath Salinas Park, and then some other five to ten acres on the west side of Grant, near Hollinsworth Head Start Center. This acreage was brought to our attention as potentially being owned by the city of, city of Odessa, excuse me, by an outside oil and gas operator. We had some records at my firm that indicated we may, the city may very well have fee minerals in this acreage. The most cost-effective way for us to find out is to see if anybody wants to lease them. So we have put together the three RFPs. I believe they've been provided to the council. Purchasing has approved the dates for the proposal conference and the issuance dates. And we've put together a long list of potential recipients that might be interested in leasing this. Although I'm fairly confident that the parties will be the usual suspects. It'll be the Diamondbacks and the Continentals who will, who will possibly want to lease this acreage. We, I can't guarantee that we'll actually get any bids on them. We have provided for a minimum bid of $10,000 per acre, which I do believe is appropriate considering the, the new information that is coming out about the minerals underneath the city. So we'll see if we get anything back and, and then take our next steps from there.
Thank you. Do we need a motion to accept those recommendations? Okay, fantastic. Any questions to Steve before we go? If not, then Councilman McNeil? Councilman McNeil makes a motion, second by Councilman Haney. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion unanimous. Thank you, Steve. We appreciate it. Good, agenda item number eleven. Discuss and consider funding options for the visitor's center and the Jack Rabbit monument. Erin?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. So just wanted to kind of go through really where we're at as far as funding for this project. And currently in the proposed budget, there is spending authority for $3.5 million toward Visitor Center and this project with the Jack Rabbit. So with that, I think that's a pretty good step forward for this project. Obviously, there's opportunity for public-private partnerships and things of that nature. So obviously, some of the council members, Mr. Vela, have been involved with these conversations with outside groups like the Chamber. Visit Odessa, I'm sorry.
Discover.
Discover Odessa. So, but anyway, spending authority, quite a bit of it is there. Obviously, there's some ways to go, and certainly we're here to facilitate as best we can receiving the remaining funds once we get a total budget.
I may call on Renee Earle, since she's at the back. And there's a study by Dr. Perryman, and I think it's really critical we consider and remember the economic benefit to our community. Do you remember the figures off the top of your head?
Well...
Would you like a copy?
I would love to read that copy. I brought my folder, but it didn't have that in that, so. The city of Odessa does not have a visitor's center. We have a very small entry area into our chamber that has visitor information, and we do get a lot of visitors there. You would not think we do, but we do, and we track those. But I think having a one-stop shop that can talk about the history of Odessa and the attractions of Odessa would really be beneficial. And according to Dr. Perryman, who did do a, just an analysis on the funding of other communities that do have visitor's center and what these visitors do when they come, they spend money on gas, they spend money on hotels, they go eat, they, they create sales tax. Tourism alone is a multi-billion dollar business for any community. So again, and I know we presented this to you all probably back in July, several months ago, but just the economic impact of a visitor's center alone, according to Dr. Perryman, fifty-five point four billion dollars in annual expenditures from tourism alone, creating over three hundred jobs. Now, this is long-term, but of course, Dr. Perryman does a lot of research and has looked at other similar cities our size as to the impact of what this visitor's center would do. Again, this would be something that would be open twenty-four, not twenty-four-seven, but seven days a week. It would be overseen by our Discover Odessa Tourism Department that we contract with you all for that. We would also utilize volunteers that we have. Councilman Vazquez is one of our active volunteers. I, I do think, and I hate to use the phrase, if you build it, they will come, but I do believe a, a city of our size should have a visitor's center. I have visited several of those in the last couple of months because this has come to mind and, and just the awareness of that. Our friends to the east have one on the interstate that I went and visited. I've driven by there a thousand times, and I finally stopped, wanted to see what it was all about. A lot of history about Midland, a beautiful facility right there on the interstate. So we're looking at doing something downtown, really drawing people into our downtown area so that we can also capture them in other parts of our community for retail, and again, spending that money on different items. So we're hoping you will support this. We certainly appreciate the $3.5 million start. We estimate with the visitor's center, as well as our fifty-foot-plus Jack Rabbit that would really be the mascot of our community, would be about a $5 million project. I know that we've already had some people donate some money or pledge money towards the rabbit itself, so we know that we could have, again, private-public funds available through grant writing as well as philanthropy. So we just feel like that this is something that we can all get behind and hopefully have part of it completed by the Centennial of Odessa, which would be April twenty-twenty-seven.
I think the number right now, the current donations, we haven't asked for any yet. There's already been one hundred and fifty thousand raised, pledged, and we hadn't, we haven't sent out the first request yet. So if that tells you to some degree of how excited the, the community is, I think that answers the question. Unsolicited, one hundred and fifty thousand, so.
And we do have an active community committee on this, and several of those people, if you would stand or wave your hand, they're here. A lot of, you know, we have city employees, we have community leaders, people who are interested just today. I, I had someone say, I'm really interested in that, would love to be a part of it. Come on, it's, it's, we want people to join us. And again, it can be something that will be different, and I will give the mayor credit. It was his plan to come up with having our, the largest Jack Rabbit. We held that award for many, many years, and then the community of Rawls, Texas beat us out. But we're going to make sure with a fifty-foot-plus rabbit that we hold that from, you know, that point on. So be happy to answer any questions. It's very much in the conceptual stage. We just wanted to really get to this point where we have some dollars committed to that so we can move forward in some planning.
Counsel, any questions?
Two things. The dollars we're pledging are out of hot funds, correct?
Correct, because it's tourism-based, so.
Right. So no, nobody's property taxes, nobody, this is all dollars from people who have stayed in hotels.
People who come into this community, who spend their money here from outside of the area through hotel-motel funding. Excellent point.
And that money can't be used to build a school or fill a pothole.
Absolutely, thank you. It's great use of that money.
In my little Ray Perryman Economic Impact Study, Tech dot says we have fifty-five thousand cars a day on I-20. If we can get five percent of those to pull off and spend forty dollars, that's forty million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
And I think that's the point. It's not just building some stupid rabbit. It, it's an economic driver. It's going to create its own set of income, and so.
Well, no, but the point I made was if you ever go to Riedosa, and you stop in Roswell at the light, and you look downtown, there's two hundred people milling about.
For the aliens.
For the aliens. Now, I, I was talking to Tim this morning, and I said, if you took a poll of all those folks and said, did you come here specifically for the aliens, or are you just passing through on your way and you stopped? I'd say ninety-eight percent of them are just passing through on their way. So if we can capture those folks who are driving to Dallas or Los Angeles or wherever they're going, and I love that you said a mascot, you know, we've talked about, I want signs like Buc-E's, when you leave Dallas, you see the Jack Rabbit, say, turn right in three hundred miles.
Well, another thing, once you get, once we get our sports complex completed, think about all these other...
Absolutely.
That's going to enhance the, the...
Because again, and he's not here, so I can say it, like the spire, I don't think anyone comes to Odessa to see the spire. But while they're here, it's nice for them to be able to visit. And it's a great driver of art, public art. This is another piece of that public art plan, and I think it's incredible. I love it. I want it to be like the eyeball in Dallas. It's a little weird, but.
It checks a lot of boxes.
People will want to get married in front of our rabbit. How about that?
They'll certainly want to take all types of photos. We have, many of our attractions in the community, we have a, Discover Odessa has a software that where, where they can collect photos that are taken by anyone. And you'd be amazed at the wedding photos that are taken at Stonehenge. I mean, there's, it really, and our rabbits that currently exist, we have over thirty-five of them, and we have a Jack Rabbit pass where people can go have their pictures taken. They bring us their pass, we give them a stuffed animal, and we have a lot of people who do that. And we're also looking at, another committee is looking at redoing some of those rabbits and purchase, you know, making those available to companies who are interested in having those at their, their business. It's been over twenty years, and I know we have people who say, I want a rabbit now. So that's rabbit two-point-oh.
And those rabbits are all privately owned.
They are privately owned.
So it's not the city's job to repaint them when they...
By the organization in which they, where they are sitting. They maintain that. Some of them have maintained them, have them repainted. We're hoping that we can start a campaign to get all of them a little refurbished, and yes. If any of our committee members would love to speak, I'd love for them to, to come on up.
Get a chance.
But again, we, this is really conceptual, and, and after you approve this funding, then that allows us to go out and really formalize our plan and have a request for artists to take a look at what they want to do. Peggy Dean is on our committee. I'll let Peggy.
That'd be former councilman Peggy Dean.
I'll let Peggy take us home.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to add to this. You all know that in two years, it's our centennial, April's our centennial, but, but twenty-twenty-seven is going to be our centennial year, and we're going to have activities all throughout the year. And so to have this rabbit finished sometime in twenty-twenty-seven is just going to be another fabulous thing. The courthouse and the library will be not finished, but way along the way. And then that spire becomes real noticeable, and the Jack Rabbit, everybody sees it. I mean, we're really going to create something incredibly exciting that we're going to celebrate the entire year of twenty-twenty-seven.
Hundred years. Thank you. Thank you. All right, gentlemen, any questions?
Mayor.
Sir.
Ideas? Is there other, just additional idea on fundraising? The corporate sponsorships and things like that are also important, but listen to this one because this is a little twist off of hot funds, and it could be supplemental to hot funds. But it's, it's called a hotel tourism co-founded model, and it reads as such, "To invite existing hot recipients to contribute a portion of their own allocations toward a shared community tourism asset, the visitor's center and the Jack Rabbit monument. The monument associated with the visitor's center easily qualifies under these categories, providing the visitor's center primary serves tourists and is featured in tourism marketing." I know as a business owner in the past, if I had another business that really did something moved in, or was it wonderful, and another attraction that brought more people to my business area, this is what the Jack Rabbit and also the visitor's center will be doing. So why wouldn't some of our hot funders, if they just give a portion of that to contribute to the vitalization of our downtown? It's just another idea.
I love the idea. Thank you, Councilman. Connell, that's a great idea. Gentlemen, any, no other comments? I entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we, I don't know what we're approving on the... Because we're discussing, but I would make a motion, we approve the funding as written in the budget for the visitor's center out of the, the hot funds. And that would come from the to, from the, from the total budget, obviously. So if the budget is approved as presented, that would be in there for you.
That'd be automatically in there, okay. So we really don't need any motion?
I, I think we probably just need direction, staff direction to pursue the project with public-private, and with, and with public-private partnerships.
I think that's, I think that's what, I think what I'm hearing from councils, we all think it's a great idea, so I think we're going to move forward on it once that budget's approved. If the budget's approved. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, agenda item number twelve. Consider ratifying the property tax revenue increase reflected in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five-twenty-six annual budget. Kaylee?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Today, we will be considering the ratification of the property tax revenue increase associated with our budget. So local government code chapter one hundred and two requires us to vote on the increased revenue that will result from the tax levy, and that is a separate vote by regulations from the adoption of the budget and the levy of the actual tax. So the verbiage that we're required to read out loud, "This budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of $6,203,805", which is a eleven point four percent increase from last year's budget. And of that amount, $1,266,660 is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax rule this year. So once again, we're not levying the tax, we're just ratifying the revenue increase.
And the increase is less than half a penny per hundred-dollar valuation, correct?
It is point four-seven compared to point four-six.
Which is, which is less than half a penny.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, gentlemen, any questions? Discussion? If not, entertain a motion. So moved. Much by... On, on your motion, I'm assuming, Councilmember, you adopted the language as she read. What she said. Yes. Verbatim, verbatim. Thank you, I forgot that, apologize.
Thank you.
Motion by Steve to adopt the exact language read by Kaylee. Is there a second?
I'll second that, verbatim.
Councilman Vazquez, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion unanimous. Thank you, Kaylee. All right. Agenda item thirteen, consider the approval or request for qualification selection of owners representative of a multi-sports complex to the sports facility companies. Erin?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, on August fifth, the city issued an RFQ seeking proposals for qualified firms to provide owners' represent, owners' representative services for the development of our new multi-sports complex. When those went out, eleven firms submitted proposals back to the, back to the city. So eleven firms responded. And then on August eighth, we, a committee of, of city staff conducted initial review of the scoring of all, of all those that came through. And of those three, three of them ranked highest, and those were Dunaway, the Sports Facilities Company, and KDC Associates. We invited them back for presentations to the committee. And then following the presentations and a pretty lengthy, comprehensive evaluation process, sports facilities companies received the highest overall score and was recommended by the evaluation committee as the most qualified firm to provide owners' rep services for the project.
Erin, where are they based from?
They are, I believe they're based in Florida. However, they do projects in the state of Texas, and they have staff in the state of Texas. One major project would be the Legends Facility in Bryan. They operate that facility down there and actually helped the city of Bryan through the entire process with that project, just as an example.
Good.
In addition, they manage a facility down in Houston area, Fort Bend County Event Center, I believe, is what it's called.
So after construction and completion, are they going to be involved in the management of the facility?
We do not know that. They have indicated that they are very interested in, in, in putting in for an RFQ, I'm sorry, an RFP for the operation of it as well. Although we've sent that out to several companies, I bet you at least ten companies are aware of it, that that RFP is out for operations of the facility. We've given those folks about thirty days to respond. It's a pretty big proposal when you think about it coming back. You know, you're talking about a relationship that we would be involved in, involved, involved in, sorry, for potentially twenty years or more. So we want to make sure that they get their performance right, their, their numbers right before they come back, so.
So for, just for the council's edification, for those of you who might not have been, or, or not on council when we did the renovation of Floyd Gwynne Park, we did not have an advocate for the city to watch that project and watch that contractor. And just to remind everybody, we had to go back and fix a lot of what they didn't do, and that they were tasked to do. So on a project this size, is my opinion that it's certainly important for us to have our advocate out there to make sure that we stay in budget and that the quality of work is what we're expecting instead of walking trail lights that don't have wires to them and everything else we experienced at Floyd Gwynne. So that's, I think this is really a good move, and I appreciate staff taking the time to do that. All right, do you have any other questions or comments?
I believe in one of the proposals, there was a breakdown of how much time they would spend, like, on the project. So I, I think kind of to Gilbert's question, if they're from Florida, how does, do they move somebody here to sit out there every day? Or... They, they would actually, yes. So for instance, again, they have projects that they do all over the country. I kind of compare it to, I don't know, you know, when you think about a Bass Pro Shop that gets built or a Walmart that gets built. There are companies that build these facilities all over the country, and they put staff in these cities while those projects are being placed. So we made it very clear... So they would assign somebody to Odessa? That's correct. They would be here. And that will be, and we will line that out, by the way, because there's still another step here, which is to enter into contract negotiation, and all those expectations will certainly be lined out there. Because knowing the other two are in Midland. Correct. And, and we, and we took great consideration, knowing that there were firms, obviously local, that also put in for this as well.
All right, can entertain a motions or no other discussion? Mayor, I've moved that we accept the sports facility companies as the, select the owner's representative for the sports complex. Second by Councilman Haney. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, agenda item fourteen, open a public hearing to discuss and consider the approval of an ordinance levying assessments on accessible properties within the Windmill Crossing operations and Maintenance Public Improvement District, including the acceptance of a final amended and restated twenty-twenty-five ONM servicing assessment plan list. including the acceptance of a final amended and restated 2025 ONM servicing assessment plan list.
Thank you, Mayor. If you guys recall, probably for the past month, we've been talking about Windmill Crossing, Operation Maintenance Public Improvement. So today is a day that we actually have P3 here. We have Jordan Sawyer that's here, that he will give a presentation for you guys of what it really means and what we're doing and what we're going to be amending. So I'll let him present, and then if you guys have any questions between him and I, we can answer whatever questions you guys have.
Mayor, Council, Mayor and Council, okay, this is going to be down here. I'll just speak loudly. Mayor, Council, Jordan Sawyer, P3 Works, with the city's PIT administrator. So really, what I'm here to talk about today, and we'll have a little presentation here just giving a background on the Windmill Crossing, and then that steps there, is every year for a PIT? Perfect. Thank you so much. Every year a PIT, whenever there's a PIT that's been created, levying assessments, every year we're required to come back and update that assessment. Specifically for this one, as an operation and maintenance PIT, we're really making sure that the budgeted costs are being captured as part of that assessment. So our job as the administrator is that we're taking those costs, the budgeted cost, those totals are being calculated as an assessment, and then we're really going forward to making sure that each home is allocated that proper portion. That amount that's being assessed as part of tonight's process will be billed through a third-party company that will be collecting that. This will be an assessment that does place a lien on the property. So it's really collected like a property tax, it's just being collected by a third party, because I know that was a question we had talked about. So I'm ready whenever the presentation. Perfect.
The big one.
Big one, there you go. All right. So little backgrounds on Windmill Crossing, created back in 2024. The first assessments were levied in 2024 and were due earlier this year. So this assessment that's being considered tonight will be the second iteration of the assessments. So what those assessments are being levied for, you see there, the categories, beautification, utilities, city admin, replacement reserve account, safety and security, insurance, and then collection cost. Those assessments, in accordance with the original development agreement that was done back before the PIT was created, are levied at a maximum of either 18 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value in that PIT or the actual cost of the authorized improvements. You'll see tonight, what's being levied this year is about a 14 cent per hundred dollar assessed value assessment. And really, assessments being collected on a flat value, there's not actually a tax that's tied to the hundred dollar assessment, but we give you that number just to tie it into what would be as if it were a tax. That assessment's going to be updated, like we talked about, every year. We'll be back here every year to talk a little bit about that as the budget gets updated in accordance to statute. So here's the budget for what the assessments are being levied. You see, the large, the lion's share of this is beautification. That's really made up of primarily city's mowing contracts. There's a lot of property out there that is being maintained. This is also maintaining the parks, maintaining, there's also the parts, there's going to be a maintenance part that's going to update those every year. There's going to be a required walkthrough of those parts that will be paid out of that, as well as other maintenance of open spaces. So that's the lion's share of that. The annual collection costs, those are the costs that are related to the collection of that. That includes all the parties, that would be the third-party collection, that would be any of the other trustees that are working on that. We include our fee for the last two years. There's also city administration, that's including city time, and a replacement reserve that's really there as we move forward. We're obviously collecting dollars on a year-over-year basis, so having that reserve in case something goes and needs money in the interim. So that's where we get to that 3,000, oh, 301,000 dollar, sorry, 301,000 dollar assessment, putting too many commas in there. So as I said, it's about a 14 cent equivalent tax rate. Again, assessment is levied on a per-dollar rate, not on a actual per-assessed value, but we put it in there just because that's really how most people think about assessments. Going forward, like I talked about, we'll be out every year to levy a new assessment in order to pay for these budgeted costs. This is a five-year budget that was prepared by the developer back when this was started. As the improvements are being completed, being dedicated over to the city, we'll continue to work with the city team and the developer team to update this budget to make sure it captures actual cost. And as I said, the assessment every year will be levied at the lesser of the actual cost of the improvements, or 18 cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation in that area. So here's what the budget looks like. You see it kind of growing every year. Really, that beautification's a big part of that. That's really what the feature, the primary feature here is to make sure that that area is maintained outside of the city's general fund. So I know we had a discussion with some of the city staff, and that's a big piece of this, is making sure that these dollars are available, that's not being pulled from the city's general fund to maintain this specific area. The big feature of PIDs is that it allows you to localize the cost to those that are benefiting from that area. So as we talked about, here's the assessments based on those budgeted costs. That's what we're looking at, the assessment. It grows a little bit each year, always capped at that 18 cents per, as the maximum. That dollar is based on the assessed value over the entirety of the PIT, and then each different lot type, so a 40-foot lot type, a 30-foot lot type, each of those would be a lot type that has assessed a specific amount. So that's what really we're going through, is we're making sure we have that total assessment and then allocating it to each of the lots on a per, on an equal basis, based on the benefit they receive. So happy to answer any questions, talk through anything else there. So I know, I know the PIDs are their own little animals, so we're always happy to help.
Thank you. Any questions for open a public hearing?
What happens after 2030?
What happens after 2030? We continue to update the budgets. The budget, this will be maintained for as long as they continue to have those projects up there. There'll be an updated budget every five years, is what I believe the development requires.
And this only affects where this is at, right?
Yes, sir. This is only within the Windmill Crossing.
Want to make that clear, so.
Absolutely.
People hear, oh, man, now they're going to charge 14 cents on everything.
Yeah, no, this is primarily just to maintain those specific parts that are for the benefit of that area.
Any other questions? Let's open up a public hearing. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak may do so at this time. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Dallas, you coming or not?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought you were coming. Seeing no speakers, then we'll close the public hearing. Jim, any other questions for either this or? If not, entertain a motion, then approve the ordinance levying assessment.
So move.
Motion by Councilman Canal, is her second. Second by Councilman Haney. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, before you leave, Item 14, can I just take a couple of minutes?
Absolutely.
I just want to bring up something with working with the planning department and the city attorney's office and the permit department. We had a gentleman who needed some assistance regarding a meter, electricity meter. And we worked with the planning department, they worked with us, we worked with inspections, and we got it done. And, you know, the easiest thing to have done, Mayor, was to have said, ah, you just got to replat it, or you got to go to the board of adjustment. But we kept talking to planning, they kept talking about it. We explored options. And I know in the grand scheme of things, this is not an earth-shattering deal, but it meant a lot to that individual and his 80-year-old parents that now they have their place, they have their electricity, and they're good to go. And I just think sometimes, you know, y'all don't hear those kind of things, but we really enjoy the relationship we had with the departments on that.
Thanks, Keith. And we'll say, it's been a pleasure working with this council and with these city employees. We're working together, and I think working together is what makes this town better maintained, better runs. I want to thank both council, as well as all the department heads and everyone at the city for doing their best to find, be a problem solver and not a problem creator. So thank you very much, Keith, for hearing that. We appreciate it.
And state law requires you, Mayor, you don't have to jump to items 18, 19, and 20.
Right.
Consider 15.
Yeah, I would entertain a motion to take 18, 19, 20 out of order. Is there a motion?
I want to make a move to, move, suspend the rules and move 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20, and take them out of order.
Thank you. Second by Councilman Mitchell. Let me give everybody a little bit of understanding. Oh, we do need to vote on that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, we're now taking up 18, 19, and 20 individually. Start with 18. Before Kaylee speaks, I want to say this. This council listens to the citizens, it listens to our, the people in Odessa, and there's, a lot of people upset about the current taxing situation with the city and all the governmental entities. And for that, you know, we hear you. We hear you. We want to do something. And so almost every individual councilman has contacted me and saying, we've got to help our people. We've got to do something. What can we do? And we, you know, can't do it till we're all together. I mean, I can hear your, I hear your concern, I hear, you know, the problem. And so we would like to change, make a change. I think you're going to hear it in a moment. Rather than increase utility, sewer, and water, this council could discuss it. But I think you'll find we're very receptive to not increasing the rates this year. Kaylee, come forward, please, if you will. I know what the at-least proposed rate increase was. Can you tell us about considering the approval of the rate, water rate change first, number 18, which now is the new number, it's 15 now?
Yes, sir. Okay, so by ordinance is the way that we adopt our rates for utilities, water, sewer, and trash. There are two readings of the ordinances. So the first one is today, and the proposed ordinance in front of you does contain a 1.5% increase in this number is water rate. So in water rates, the 1.5% was factored into all of our budgetary figures. So if you have any questions on revenue impact or anything like that, I can certainly answer them. If not, that's okay as well, but that is what is before you in this agenda item.
Thank you, Kaylee.
You're welcome.
So how much money are we talking about?
So for the water, water funds specifically, water, sewer are together. But revenues that we will not capture if we do not increase the 1.5% is $794,795.
And of that amount, taxpayers will not pay 700 and some odd dollars in increased value, correct? So it's a $700,000 savings to all the taxpayers in the city of Odessa just on that one category alone.
On their water rates, yes, sir.
Water rates. Anyone have a comment, thought, suggestion?
I suggest we pass it.
Mayor, I'd like to make a move to approve the, change the ordinance to reflect a 0% increase on those three items, the water, sewer, and solid waste.
I think we need to do one at a time, I think, Steve. I think. We'll start with the water rate change.
Water rate change at 0% instead of 1.5%.
There's a motion by Councilman Thompson, there's a second by Councilman Stoker. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Thank you. Now, new number 16 that was 19, consider the approval of sewer rate change.
Okay, same consideration here. The revenue that we will not be capturing if we do not move forward with a 1.5% increase in sewer rates is $275,017.13. So the water and the sewer are, of course, captured under one fund. So both of those together total $1,069,812.23 approximately.
Mayor, I'd move to approve the ordinance to reflect a 0% increase in the sewer utility rate for 2026.
A motion by Councilman Thompson.
Second.
Second by Councilman Canal.
Which one? Herb, right?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous.
My phone says aye.
All right, new number 20, which is now 17, consider the approval of solid waste rate change.
Thank you. Same consideration here. If we do not move forward with 1.5% increase, the revenue we do not capture is $284,183.24 approximately.
Mayor, I'd also move to approve the ordinance to reflect a 0% increase in solid waste utility rate.
I second.
Motion by Councilman Thompson, a second by Councilman Haney. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I do believe, sir.
We just saved our taxpayer about 1.3 million.
Mr. Stretcher, please correct me if I'm wrong, but since we're not increasing the rates, I believe the ordinance as it exists right now stands. And so I don't believe there will be a need to bring it back, but I would like legal's opinion on that.
I can't see any need to bring it back on second reading because it's just the same rate, and so it would go into effect. However, you know, if the council wants to see it, we'll bring it back. I just don't think it'll have any legal effect.
I think that's right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just to remind everybody, also, last meeting, we froze the senior rate of where it was. That was really important to Mr. Vasquez and I, not to you, Ken.
Senior rate. I think this council once made a statement that we listen to our citizens. We're going to try our best to maintain a very physically strict, conservative approach. We had to increase the budget slightly to meet, frankly, payroll obligations, but we're trying to do what we can to ensure our citizens. We're sensitive to the tax consequences that affect our citizens. And as everyone knows, there's, unfortunately, that other governmental entities have increased taxes this year, and we're trying to do what we can to lessen the impact on our citizens. So thank council for what y'all have done. I think you've done a great thing for our citizens. Let's now move to what was 15, that's now, I guess, 18. Consider adoption of the city of Odessa fiscal year 2025-2026 annual budget. Kaylee.
Thank you. So the reason that we went out of order, just for everyone in the room, I'm sure you all know, but is so that we could talk about the rates before we got to the adoption of the budget. The maintenance of the rates as is will impact the figures that are in our proposed budget. So when we make the motion to adopt them, we'll just make sure that we motion to adopt the budget with the correct impact. And I think maybe you have those, those figures in.
I do. I do. I may give them to you so you can, oh, you got it right there. The council, any questions? Kaylee, on our budget? If not, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would make a motion that we adopt the Odessa fiscal year 25-26 annual budget as presented to reduce the water rate, the sewer rate projected at $86 million. Reduce the water and sewer fund balance 96 million. Reduce the solid waste 18 million, and reduce the solid waste fund balance will come down to 8.7 million.
And we have it in writing.
Can you read on the solid waste? Can you read the actual number on that last one? Well, I have it, but I think for the sake of the motion.
Solid waste.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I don't know what, solid waste is 18.9 million. So we're reducing solid waste to 18.9 million.
18, 9, 25, 9, 9, 9. I want you the whole number.
18 million, 9, 25, 9.
Don't look at me.
You want to slap my hand or what?
Precision.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You need anything else?
Aaron?
I need a second. Okay, wait, I think Eddie beat you. Eddie, Thompson's second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. The budget is approved in the first reading. All right. Now, next one, number 16, original 16. Consider reallocation of the remaining 219 tip of obligation funds. Kaylee.
Thank you so much. So last work session, we did go over the projects that we are considering reallocating the $11 million and change to, So once again, just a brief recap, this will go to street projects in the amount of $178,000 and change, park's irrigation system in the amount of $100,000, secure fenced parking area for the Odessa Police Department in the amount of $384,000 and change, and a new fire station for Odessa Fire Rescue in the amount of $10,913,000 and change. So this will fully exhaust our, or fully commit, rather, our 2019 bond funds, which is good. You know, the longer we wait to use those funds, the less buying power they have. So with your approval, we'll be making great steps in that regard.
Thank you. Any questions, Kaylee? I entertain a motion, so move. Motion by Councilman Haney, your second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Thompson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to Agenda Item Number 17. Consider amending the amended and restated performance agreement by and between Odessa Development Corporation and Welcome and Trading Company, Inc. for the purpose of constructing necessary infrastructure improvements for proposed light industrial park consisting of extension of Fodrick Road and related sewer and water for proposed light industrial park consisting of extension of Fodry Road and related sewer and water improvement from Yukon north to the industrial park. Keith?
Just real brief, uh, Mayor, that original contract was for, uh, six million, five hundred thousand, I believe. The ODC met this morning and agreed to increase it by three hundred thousand, so now it's six million, eight hundred thousand. The proposal that we have received now is that the improvements can be made for two hundred and sixty-four thousand, so that leaves a balance, I believe, of thirty-six thousand. The, uh, contract allows the mayor and the chairman of the ODC to approve invoices over, uh, to spend some of that thirty-six thousand, as long as the contract does not increase beyond six point eight, six million, eight hundred thousand. So that's it in a nutshell. It's just the, uh, ODC approved an additional three hundred thousand in funding.
Do you have any questions, Keith?
They have quite a bit in the, quite a bit of funding in it.
Not entertain a motion.
Subma?
Motion by Councilman Canal, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman, this Mitchell?
Right.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Got it.
Motion passes.
Mayor, I'd like to take a moment and thank ODC for cooperating with us. It's like anything else, you start building something and sometimes remodeling, you run into things that you didn't know you were gonna run into, and that's what happened on half of Fodry. We thought was gonna be okay down there, and when we got down there, there was, it was built so poorly, it wasn't gonna last or ha- or handle the traffic, so, uh, that's the reason for the change. I just want the public to know that. We don't wanna build that one facility and half the road's good, and then a year, half the road's collapsing. So, uh, appreciate ODC cooperating with us to get this done.
I call that Team Odessa, everybody working together for what's best for the City of Odessa. Thank you, everyone, for helping. Now, let's go to agenda item number twenty-one. Pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section five fifty-one point one-on-one, the city council will hold an executive session, which is close to the public, discuss the following matters as permitted under the following section of the Texas Government Code. A, Section five fifty-one point zero seven-two, deliberation regarding real property, discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property in Section twenty-four, Block forty-two, survey of Ector County, Texas. B, Section five fifty-one point zero seven-one, consultation with attorney, discuss matters in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with Chapter five fifty-one of the Texas Government Code. And C, Section five fifty-one point zero seven-four, personnel matters, deliberate employment duties of the city attorney to be appointed by city council. I take a motion to go into executive session. Some of the, the motion by Councilman Haney is our second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Canal. We are now, uh, all, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
So quick. We are now in executive session at six fifty-five. Thank you.